And the, just the equipment that's back there to run it with wouldn't even fit in the sheriff's department. He has nowhere to put his. So if it went back to that, then he'd have to rent a space to put dispatch.
Well, my question is, is that if that we, if that the nine one one center is running high on their money, why would you not try to do the best with the insurance and we as a county is a group rate? So I'm not understanding why you want to go out and get more expensive insurance? And you know, there's a different retirement. I mean, if you could just help me out with that, I have a different.
And I weighed that, that argument. You look at some of the other agencies, not just the Canton, but smaller counties. The amount of cost it takes to train somebody, it takes realistic, that's about a year. You have dispatch fully trained and experienced, they'll have some dispatch school, different specialty school. If we're just training them and sending them to another county, that cost far outweighs what it costs for having additional benefits to keep our people in this county. Like I said, they're an investment and an asset and they can be created instead of constant turnover. I'd be like, how much sheriff's departments had to pay in training in the past five years? It outrates.
Eighty thousand. Eighty five each.
Eighty thousand years. So my, my job as director is to try to stop that reoccurring expense. It's expensive no matter what, but I have a job and a duty to maintain nine one one service. I can't just send people home and close the doors, it don't work that way. And I'm not saying it's easy.
Nobody was saying that when I was asking. My, my question was, is that why, why would you, are you saying that if you change the insurance that people would leave? Everybody would leave?
And I don't take this as just Roy's fault in Canton County. I take it from going to upper company, the directors associated, we can take five months. And all the directors discussed the same thing we're having, funding, 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 dispatch turnover. And one of the bigger things here recently, very established and larger county centers can't keep people because of paying benefits. So if I, as a nine one one district, if I can at least alleviate that and cut down on the training costs. It's a catch twenty-two, I know, but as a saving on the training costs versus paying the benefits and keeping people, I'd rather pay the benefits. But if it gets to be over all the door, we'll be paying a whole lot more.
I understand what our, where renewing is right. Coming up two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-four.
It's a, a recurring.
Thing, so this is still a year to year. Or is it a four year?
It's auto-renewed. It's four years.
A year. Is that correct?
Four years.
Term with three years, but. Yeah, uh, but let's save this work for a year. From what I've heard, there's language that states that we can have what, a hundred and eighty days? You're saying you really won't know anything until April?
No January.
January, which is beyond this budget or what we're looking at right now. But, well, what Mr. Mathi is saying and his concerns can be brought back up and reevaluated in that time period. And I understand what you're saying too. But we're stuck in the mud right now, let's move on. It can be brought back up. It can be looked at again. But we're looking at it right now.
Well, the forty-nine thousand you're talking about, I, I, you know, if that's, I think if we're going to reduce it by that amount, then we have to reduce the work that they do by that amount. But because to Roy's point, if they're doing eighty-four percent of their calls are non-nine one one related activities, then that's an eighty-four percent cost there that they shouldn't be incurred. So that cost has to go somewhere else. So whether we pay him or we pay somebody else, we're still paying the forty-nine thousand dollars or not. I mean, I'm, I'm asking this question.
I, I don't know that you can give a, give a good guesstimation question. It depends on what I have to do with our performance and house performance and all that kind of stuff. I don't have any insight, I don't know, for the big ones. Make any decent comment.
Any other discussion, any other questions you want? Thank you.
Thank you.
Back to the page nineteen.
Darryl, does this, he put it in seventeen dollar an hour or eighteen dollars?
Which one? What you got in the budget?
Yeah, this one, who's throwing those triggers?
Uh, what do you think, fifteen?
Fifteen.
It says C. Oh, did they talk about? That's not what we put in, that's not what we asked for.
What insurance?
Okay, seventeen copper on it, got some of the problem. I don't have any of these myself.
What insurance? One that Ronnie's folks said it is.
Yeah, I think everything in there would, Ronnie.
Well, the insurance, the only thing that I have on the insurance, the insurance we met and said that the best thing we can do would be on the state insurance, just like the teachers and everything else. We do have some different departments and under different insurance on this one. Is this budget for the state insurance or?
For, yeah. Uh, I'll just make comments and I know Corey's made some, uh, possible two, uh, proposals to look at. If, if you got this sheet here, that sort of footnote on, on the budget, I'll just read it in case you don't pack the front of it real quick. On the sheriff's portion of the budget, these are just assumptions that, that I, that are all the original assumptions.
What page are you on?
I, I'm just on page two of the footnote and the budget is C nineteen. C nineteen on the budget and, uh, the footnote is page two. Sheriff's Department budget is first and then we'll get to the general. Page two footnote under number nineteen to fifty-four one ten, Sheriff's Department. Okay, I, I'll just read for those that may not have it in fact. Debt paid increased to three hundred twenty-three thousand five hundred eighty-eight dollars. That's based on a fifteen dollar an hour plus two new deputies. Sheriff, uh, sheriff's salary proposals are tax due to the ones that were in the proposal that made, that George and Darryl provided for. This spreadsheet for the sheriff's department is not included in the budget. Salary that are included in the budget is the only for deputies and the rest of the office. These were calculated based on one-one points affected there, but no holiday paid included. And the reason I use the one-one point would just be as simple as that. Mathematically, dollars available, since property taxes don't start coming in as you love to do that, it can go in as much as several of any reasonable amount. Uh, then the budget not there for any three dollars to be paid to make sure we got the cover. So that's why I just pay fifty point, both on the increase in the salaries for the deputies who are not at that pay rate and for the higher number of students who get the effect. Insurance on all employees is still at the four hundred dollars per participant. Mathematically calculation on your insurance line, which is line two oh five. On the jail, which is on your next page of the budget, on page C twenty. There, your correction office pay increased to two hundred and ninety-two thousand five point three, which was calculated based on eleven dollars fifty cents an hour plus four new officers. Uh, again, the sheriff's spreadsheets, the proposals, and things, those numbers beyond that are not included in there. Uh, again, affected on one-one, uh, pointy, and no holiday pays included in there. And my thinking would just simply, I cannot push back in any formal fashion and not say that what was put on the table in the sheriff's department's got justified, line, the line, the line, the line. I've seen, I've talked with Darryl, I, I, I've looked at prior budgets, I've looked at the amount of wages turning from time to time versus just this past year this past fiscal year, meaning between the jail and the sheriff's department, it was almost a break even between budget and expenditure. They're less, but for most part, the money budget is the one that's getting, uh, as far as last fiscal year was concerned. It's just that, and again, this is Ron and Matthew talking, I represent this commission in any formal fashion. I think I have some idea where Darryl is coming from, although I'm not scared of his shoes or I can't say I, I know the forty bucks in his mind. I know he's trying to do the best job he can representing his employees, representing, and trying to do the services that people left him to do for the office over there. It's just that from Ron and Matthew's opinion, we had the whole alpha thrown in the room at one time and just can't beat the whole effort at one time. Again, that's just Ron and Matthew's logic. If this, or the amount of tax increase, would be, be necessary to support the, the, the numbers. Not that they're not justified, not that they're not needed, just cannot come up with the residue for the property tax owners to generate that kind of income. In addition to not knowing, although it's a certain, we have some huge expenses coming down the road. Either by choice or calculated on a standpoint of the force. And that's a fact too. Remember what the numbers look like, but what we're talking about is we're not talking thousands or hundreds of thousands of dollars. I know that there's a movement going forward from a standpoint of trying to get some things going, balls rolling. I, I know that Darryl and his good folks set aside through the U.S. Secretary's account, a dollar amount, one sixty-four thousand plus that's accumulated in there. Well, it would cover such fees as our take fees, which after the assessments is being, uh, being asked, or been asked for to be done, would be a major step in the process after the assessment is done. That would allow things to be more in focus and know what alternatives out there, what alternatives are, alternative chosen and the costs associated with it all. So when I put all that on the table, and again, just trying to get information and recognize, even with they, these small increases for the deputies and the jails, uh, if you turn to the sheet that looks like this in the footnote, because we're actually committed not to the initial, just the fifteen, but up to the maximum. I, I apologize, uh, the initials of the eleven and the fifteen, I think, what it is. Yeah, eleven fifty versus the, uh, fifteen dollars per hour, up to the maximum of the fifteen versus twelve, seventeen versus fifteen. And Diane, is Diane in?
Yes.
Diane, keep me straight on interpreting this, if you would please. It's three hundred and sixty-eight thousand nine forty. If the fifteen dollar hour is twitting in full effect for all deputies making, that would be the maximum cause that should be reoccurring. If, if this budget is put in place with the initial, uh, that's jail, I apologize. That's perfect, Diane, you got deputy, but jail, right? Well, for sure. It, it is, because I, the fifteen relates to the jail, right?
Seventeen.
Okay, so remove everybody from the, you're going to the eleven fifty. Make sure I'm stating the number right. Yeah, eleven fifty, and everybody is, is, is got to the maximum of fifteen bucks based on the head count. Uh, you actually have reoccurring expenses of three hundred sixty-eight thousand nine four, nine hundred forty dollars. Versus this year, uh, your cost based upon your, uh, January through June, which half a year give or take is two, is what, two seventy-eight nine, two seventy-eight, two thirty-five? Okay, that was eighteen ninety budget, I apologize. Okay, and then if you, the, the pay would actually be a hundred eighty-four, four seventy, which is thirteen time periods, six months worth. So a difference there of actual, an increase in this budget of nine thousand seven oh five. But when you go four years, everybody reaching the maximum, everybody getting paid the maximum, you're actually going to max out at three sixty-eight, nine forty on the jails. And the same thing from a standpoint of deputies, if everybody makes it up to the seventeen getting paid, then that is a reoccurring expense of four eighteen, one thirty-two. Last fiscal year, that's two seventy-eight, two thirty-five, half a year's pay is one thirty-nine, uh, eight, nine thousand. So again, this fiscal budget, half a year will be, well, based at one forty thousand, one forty thousand, with a maximum potential of four eighteen if you have to do that. So again, uh, just to give you some idea, I have math for us, but, uh, the numbers are, you know, they're just, they're just numbers. It's what we decide that makes sense and what can make things work and maybe it's the first step in, in process of, I believe Jordan made reference to, or that, you know, if they were to get top down, that he made more than the boss, well, that don't quite work either. So we recognize that too, so, you know, just trying to make a good faith effort and, and first step. And hopefully next year, maybe we can look at another category to move, next year there'll be something else, try to, just try to make the numbers work.
Hey Ronnie, can I say something about the insurance? Mr. Cherry? Russell, you want to?
Yeah, on the jail personnel. Are they not eligible right here?
They, they're included in the sheriff's budget. Is that not correct? I believe that we asked the same question. The insurance for the jail personnel, is that's included on the sheriff's insurance, correct?
Yes.
Does that answer your question? Why?
Well, always been set up lucky, their employees did. But I'm liking insurance, you just set up on one line, I don't mind the sheriff's.
So the leading numbers are not exactly right. They are right, but they're not right. You got employees represented on one line, not represented on another. How many guards you got, Darryl? Please, sir.
Well, two, three short right now. I'm supposed to have ten. Two transporters.
You're supposed to have ten and you're three short?
Yeah.
So it's seven. And you got three transport personnel?
Two. Two.
Two. And cafeteria personnel, please.
Two.
Two. One maintenance?
Yes.
All right. How many deputies do you have, sir?
Well, four short right now on those.
Four short?
Yeah. Got it.
How many you supposed to have?
Three road officers short and an investigator short. Supposed to have ten. Two investigators, two sergeants.
Wait, wait, four, get five, nine, right. You got six deputies?
I, I supposed to have ten deputies.
Yes, sir.
I asked for two more.
You got six?
Right now, got eight, two more issues. Eight.
Eight. And how many investigators, sir?
One.
How many sergeants, sir?
Supposed to have two, but I got one.
Got one. And I think you got one chief deputy.
Yes. I supposed to have two SROs, but they're not going to scoop, they're, I'm keeping them at the office.
So they're still paid under the SRO?
Yes.
But you have actually none.
Well, not in scoop system, right now.
I had an actual question, thank you, sir.
I just want to make a comment about the insurance. Three, four years ago, I had the best plan for, you know, a single person, paid zero out on my check. If I take the best plan now, I think I'd be paying what, two hundred and something dollars of pay period, is that right, Miss Ellen? That's like, uh, just simple math, twenty-five hundred dollar pay that I took just on my insurance, just for me. I mean, and you ain't even talking about giving none of the salary people a raise on there. You're only talking about giving two groups a, a raise, you ain't talking about giving any above a raise here. And I'm taking, already took the twenty-five hundred dollar cut in pay, because we swapped insurances.
I sent that back to the lady, wasn't it?
I mean, I'm gonna be making about four dollars an hour less than my correctional officer that you give them, what we're asking for there. But I'm still supervised, even though I'm making a whole lot less than they all. I don't want to see how that's right, but.
Well, Corey, you, you made some good comments, uh, you know, please share your thoughts.
Just ask, sir.
You can pay now, you can pay later. I mean, that's pretty much what we're hoping to do. I, I don't know how we can sit and tell them that we're going to give you a four dollar cut in pay. They expect you to have any, any kind of people that's going to want to stay. I mean, we're already thinking how much of the last, in the year, we're going to have to pay?
Well, I said you have to pay your average.
So four hundred and some thousand dollars, got to train them and send them out the door. It goes back to some, some wonderful, Roy said, what, go. You have to provide incentives for people to stay. And when you look at them and say, I want to cut your pay by four dollars an hour by charging you more in, or in insurance, you're not giving them any incentive to stay. You're giving them the incentive to leave.
Yeah, I, 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 Ed, I understand exactly what you're saying. I, I know the math as, as well, I appreciate your courage. And again, I just respect your approach from a standpoint, um, involving the door seems to be more involving your deputies than anyone else in our law enforcement. It just seems like that's been talked over and over during, during our, being able to keep your deputies comfortable, so that they're going to pay. So I, again, I just try to take the highest priorities of what I thought was on the table. And I'm just trying to keep people behind as well.
But you're mixing the, flip me over to another director that's going to go.
And, and Darryl, I, I, I can't argue, not keep pushing back. All I'm saying is, if we're making a good faith effort and trying to move the ball forward, then have a little faith in us that we're going to try to keep this forward.
I've had all of the faith I've wanted out of this commission in the past commission for nine years. I've been lied to so much, been cut so much. I can't keep people, I can't keep the services going that the state mandates me to do and the people in this county and ask me to do, as Larry always said, they pick up a lot of slack that's going to revert back to here. Nine one one and the circuit courts clerk's office and my office work as a whole. It takes all three of us to make our jobs. Not necessarily, well, it does his too, because the warrants and stuff comes out of it that their dispatchers put out. And we can't keep operating like this. The state is breathing down my shirt collar. And I'm going to be the worst witness you can have sitting up there on that chair when things go downhill.
There's no incentive for a deputy to stay, you ought to move up. If he's making more than his sergeant.
What's inside for them, please?
It's not just deputies, correctional officers, I'm telling you.
Bring them on.
We have six correctional officers quit in one week, but let's don't think it's talking about deputies here.
No, I'm not.
And if you don't raise the salaries, people, we're fixing to leave them, I don't give a crap.
Well, then they come down too. We're talking about trying to keep our jail certified. You can't keep a jail certified when you ain't got nobody in there to run it.
You ain't going to certify that jail.
I, I understand that, I understand that. I mean, they, he made that very clear, there was only two ways to do that. One was pay a crap load of money, then ship prison or somewhere else over to add on. So we know we can't certify it, but I guess my point was I was trying to make is, is there's absolutely no reason for anybody to stay at that jail. I will not take a bullet for thirteen dollars an hour, I will not do it. And I, I can't imagine asking somebody else to do it then. I've got open, is it y'all want a job?
No, thank you. I've seen the results of that on that end.
It's not the simple fact of taking the bullet in at the end of the day. You can get sued so fast right now in this business, you can get sued before. To the extent of it would take, if it wasn't county insurance, one hundred percent of your salary over the course of twenty-seven years to pay back what you got sued for. So you want to pay me thirteen dollars an hour to go out here and risk losing my house? Or? Or? Uh, don't make sense.
Hey, you missed track.
Yeah. And, uh, listen, Frank, let me just tell you some, some of what I do. Them two, her, uh, transport officer had to go in as guard. Guess who had to do all the transport since February? Day and night, seven days a week. If you figured out how much I make an hour, I might be lucky to get four dollars an hour. If I'm lucky, plus my insurance is going up twenty-five hundred dollars. So let's take that all down to about a dollar seventy-five an hour. Yeah, now, boy, I didn't mean to touch you off.
No, no.
I can go further a lot. That's just part of what all I have to do. And, and, and I, I see what all, I see what you're talking about and I see, I see you, you, you're a jail administrator, you do all that stuff. Yet the deputies will be making more than you. The one reason you're making more than.
The correctional officers will be making more.
Exactly right. And from Morocco, the foreign Morocco, I mean, Friday, couldn't, you might get away with that, you might not. You want in a, but, but open, but in, in an open, uh, uh, government where everybody's open and everybody knows where everybody might.
Let me give you a little point, Reverend. I've got to work in Ingram Books. Processing books, sitting at a desk all day. Don't get cussed, don't get funned, don't get spit on, fourteen bucks a night. And we ask these guys to the target on every day, and women, and the ones up in jail too. I wouldn't do a job if they gave me thirty-nine. And my daddy was a deputy and a city cop. I seen the BS he took. And Darryl working, Darryl working was on the bank.
You refer to that stuff like I've never been in armed play?
No, sir, I ain't saying you ain't. I'm talking about these young men that trap on the gun every day to protect the county. Now, what you did and everybody that served in the military, amen, brother, I'm glad you done it. And you deserve a lot more than that. But now, we're not talking about the armed forces of the US, we're talking about the armed forces of Gannon County.
Let me get that way back to what I said, we need to pay it now, we need to pay later. If we don't pay it now, you're going to see, um, black cross bros that just sucking sand going somewhere else. And, and then we're going to be paying crap loads of money to train these people to turn around and send them out the door today.
We've got one lady next week, four six.
One second. Next morning.